... Just say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is December 12, 2016. Can we roll call?
Aaron's here. Capros?
Here.
Wayland?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
I have the minutes from November 28. Any changes, corrections? Is there a motion?
So move.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
The total tax income received since the last meeting.
We usually do this once a month because we're one meeting short this month. We have accrued all the taxes for the month yet, so that's why there's a lot of missing areas in there. The total income so far from taxes, $120,973.94. Excuse me. I also have a thank you card from the family of Paul Loman, address the village of Beecher, sending each of you our sincerest gratitude for the flowers you sent. It is truly a special reminder of your friendship with Paul. Thank you, Sandy and Pamela.
Just one question. The sales tax and the 1% sales tax. 1% is the infrastructure one, right?
Correct.
So these taxes are the same at 1%, but the 1% sales tax does not include groceries, so that's why those two numbers are different. It does not include groceries, pharmaceuticals, and vehicles. So that's why the two numbers, even though they're at 1%. There's a difference between them. This is probably the first full month of data that we're seeing.
Anyone from the audience want to address a report? If not, the commissions, the certification trustee here.
Our next meeting is going to be January, the second week in, the Tuesday, the second Tuesday in January at Village Hall. We're not having a meeting this month. That's it.
Fourth of July, commission trustee Coleman.
Nothing new to report at this time.
Use commission trustee to report.
Last month, they had their Nerf gun wars, which was a big success, first year that they did that. It was really well received. And nothing in December, so they'll start preparing for the dances coming up, Lady Daughter Dance will be the next one. That's always in early February.
Thank you. River Hope, trustee Basil.
The only thing new is the lights. I see the lights have been replaced on the ribbon and lighting up at night. Lights up at night, looks nice. That's all I have to report to say.
Start preservation trustee.
We have our meeting canceled for December. We're going to pick up the third Thursday of January.
I have a question of the commissions, the preservation tomorrow. Is there an expectation on the fire public works to have those areas cleaned with snow in the wintertime or not?
Definitely on the depot. We need to do that.
Okay. What about like the Veterans Memorial and the Cancer Memorial? There's brick pavers out there, and I don't know if you shovel or use a snow blower, that's going to damage it. That's, I mean, you don't want to use a commo.
You can't throw, well, you could throw calcium chloride on it, I guess, because it's not going to mess up the bricks, but other than...
But you got to get another stone in there, too, that you got to be careful about.
I mean, other than a push broom, I don't know, you really want to use a snow shovel. Yeah, you can't use a snow blower on there.
No.
It'll beat it.
It's a thought, maybe we can discuss it.
Sounds good.
It's a, it's upon us now, and the Cancer Memorial is new, and someone asked me about the Cancer Memorial, but I never thought of the Veterans Memorial. It's never come up, truthfully. It's never really been, we haven't talked about it before at all, and it's probably a very good one.
Yeah.
Once they're engraved, you know, maybe you might want to, you know, right now, I don't think it really matters if they're clean or not, because they're not engraved yet. But next year, we might have to deal with that.
Yeah, there might be people in for Christmas or, you know, the holidays, and they want to see the brick and everything else, so you might have to use a push broom on there.
Yeah, that's about it.
Clean them out.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I am some administration trustee here.
Treasurer's report first. At the end of November, we had a total of $2,289,690 in our account at the village. This is, this is down quite a bit from the previous month. We had some heavy expenses, and as you all were aware, we still are over last year's figure of $1,893,947. So we're following along as our, as our routine normally does over last year's totals. You're familiar with the expenditures last year. Last month, we had three payrolls. We purchased a public works truck. We had, we made a large payment on our Illinois EPA loan of $112,493. There were a lot of expenses, but we still are in a very comfortable position.
That was our last payment, by the way, on the 1996 SOF plan. So for the next two years, we start to do, that money we can bank probably used for engineering of the plant. We have that 350 we got to pay back.
Right.
But that was the last payment on the SOF plan.
Right. And that's all I have.
I'd like to make a motion approving treasurer's report and reported financial activity for November.
Second.
Motion on the floor. There was a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
The baroness reports for last month, and then close for your review. And then as far as the bills, you know, you should go over the changes, but since I wasn't feeling wrong and never came in for the first dash, I would like to make a motion to approve, since I went over these today. The bills for November in the amount of $182,947.93.
The only weird bill in here is the one to Heritage Landscaping.
There's a motion on the floor. There is a second?
Second.
Was it a motion, right? There's a second? Okay. Not my question.
That bill, apparently, Bud, they came and sprayed for the weeds in May, but they never billed us. And it seems odd to be paying a weed control bill in December, but apparently they never billed us for it.
Well, I believe they came back in September and did a fall-spring to kill the dandelions for weed control.
Yeah, that's what we looked, and I don't think they, we paid them anything in 16. Paul was the first one.
No. That's why it was, I thought about it, but that's what the contract was.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that up.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. There's a report enclosed on fund balance comparisons since 2007 for you to look at. State income tax update. There's an article from IML magazine explaining the trending loss of state income tax dollars, which it doesn't seem like.
It's not affecting us. I don't know why.
Yeah.
But a lot of other communities are really complaining about it.
So just something they're keeping an eye on. There's an Illinois Public Finance Forecast Summit planned for Thursday, January 19th at the Westin Hotel Conference Center in Lombard. It's an all-day event with information on the economy and forms of tax tools such as TIF districts. And if anyone wants to attend, the administrator will.
I had indicated to Bob today that I think I would like to go, so hope that I will go. And anybody else wants to join in? I don't think, but I think we're going, is what I'm getting at. It's a Thursday.
I think it's Friday, isn't it? Maybe I'm wrong.
I think it's Thursday. Because that's the day of our regular, you know, just...
Okay. Got to Thursday the 19th, yeah. Oh, you know what? I was looking at the...
19th is a Thursday.
Yeah. And I won't be able to do that day, so. The five-year financial plan has been released as a separate document and will be discussed at the January 23 meeting. Finance committee is going to meet Wednesday, December 21st, at 2 o'clock to discuss refinancing of bonds with Midstates Bank of Bloomington and to review the five-year plan. If any of you are interested in coming along and joining the discussion, you are welcome. Comcast has served notice of a service change and rate increase. Again?
Yeah.
Wasn't that very recently this just came through? Perhaps it's just me. Pardon?
It's probably once a year. At least.
And it just seems like it's... That is included. And then consider an ordinance establishing a travel expense policy for the village. We have to pass an ordinance prior to January 1st, although it can be amended later. So the model ordinance was released just last week by the IML, and our village attorney has refined it. That is included in the packet.
1253.
1253. So I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1253, establishing a travel expense policy for the village.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. I have a question or comment.
Do I?
To my recollection, this doesn't really change. We've currently been doing fear for...
From what we understand, it's for per diems, or reimbursement. So if you use the credit card directly for your state, your lodging, or whatever, then this one is reapply. Also, I think a stipulation mirrors, was it all the bills and everything would have to be approved by the village board? They're approved any? They're approved any. But the problem is, apparently, this law came about because there was some local government somewhere that were pocketing the money. So you would turn in a reimbursement request, maybe you didn't do the event, and you pocketed the money. This controls that, okay? But like what IML conference, whatever, we use the corporate card to reserve the hotel rooms for those that go, and the trustee never sees the money. The elected official never touches the money.
Right. And I have a question about, you know, we passed something as far as, you know, we used to all go to the convention downtown. And I think years ago, we passed that two or three could go.
Right now, we're budgeted for three, I believe, but if more than three want to go, that might drop out. So almost five will go. What it is, is that if I remember right, discussion was two, if there's a dollar amount there, and however, my, how many people can go for that dollar amount, we can go. But then when it goes over that dollar amount, we have other avenues that we could go. This would have no impact on that stat. That's strictly a budget decision you guys making this morning, is that how many people should be eligible to go, you know? I would strongly recommend that any new elected official go to IML. I think Frankie won't, as far as a new official.
Yeah.
I know John and Brian went together that one year, but if you're newly elected, you should go to that conference.
I highly recommend it as well. Anybody have questions?
No.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Public Buildings and Properties, Parks and Recreation, trustee Manning.
Okay. We have the ice rink up. Should be open hopefully by the end of the week.
As long as we can, like I said, we got to get on it and take the snow off of it. Snow's acting like an insulator, and when you step on it, there's, you know, water pushing up on the side, so, you know, it's kind of up to the good Lord. But that's our plan. We'll check it first thing in the morning.
Okay. And if it's rough, you have your Zamboni, right?
Yeah, we got all sorts of tricks, so.
Okay. And when I say Zamboni, it's a broom, right?
Well, it's got, yeah, homemade.
A squeegee?
Yeah, homemade.
You know?
I was just telling you about that.
I don't want to say Zamboni, because if people are looking for a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It works.
Now, what is going to tell people that it's open?
Well, the gates will be open.
And the light will be on.
Yeah, the lights are on, the gates are open, and then we still have the sign that we put up that has the hours on it. Nothing has changed.
Okay.
And I believe lights, the police turn the lights off at, what is it, 10 o'clock at night? Or 10:30 on the weekends.
We could send out notifications, either through our information systems or our last time, somebody close to kind of...
Right. Because, you know, it's hard to see if it's open or not, you know, so, okay.
We've been calling the village hall.
Yeah, they already called. And a couple kids this morning.
Good. I hope they use it.
And there were some miscommunications last year. Is that being handled this year? I believe there were parents that called in and wanted to know why the lights weren't on, so the lights were turned on, and the rink wasn't supposed to be open yet. If we called in.
I don't know if we turn the lights on. I don't remember that story. What, as far as you turn the lights on?
We would turn them on at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and then the police are supposed to turn them on or off. I don't even know that we're going to need it with the new lights that we put out there. It's, well, yours is on a, are they on timers? Yeah.
We have a new fence around the rink, too, so you have to physically un-patlock the gate and sort of open for it to be used this year. I think this is your first year for that new fence.
It is.
Okay. Now, the plan is to increase the size of the rink next year? Is that the plan?
Yes. Or maybe even keep it, you know, that's something we're going to have to discuss. I know the plan is that we will be new liner and kickboards that Jonathan and I had, we were, it was, we cut it out of the budget, but...
Yeah, there's a bunch of different options that you can do with this. The nice thing was, was that, was that last year was the first year with it, where we bought this system.
Right.
You know, when we first looked into this and did this, first put this thing up four years ago, you know, that was the plan, but we always framed it out of wood and did what we could afford. You know, we've set some money aside. We've got this newer system. You can go higher with the boards, which makes it nicer for playing hockey. You can keep adding on, increasing the size of it by buying bits and pieces as the years go on, without being committed to having to buy like a whole set at once. That's what's nice about this system, and it's good. And then, you know, as the years progress, you know, it's, you know, the public works department, I think, and Scott can decide what route they want to go. If they want to add some more boards, and then the next year, go a little bit higher with it, and then maybe, you know, whatever. But there's options that you can do with the system that's in place now versus what we had before, so.
Good. Okay. Village receives employee safety grant of $4,300 from the insurance carrier to provide more, for more safety measures for our employees. We are looking at using this safety grant to install intrusion and panic alarms and video surveillance at the village hall. So that's what we're planning on doing with that. As of the village hall generator, the generator is up and working, but had to be taken off standby mode since it is producing what they call dirty power for sensitive electronic devices. Now, Bob, you want to explain?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Buddy, because I believe they're going to try one of the ass thing, our generator on Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning, they're coming back in. They got in, had discussions with Generac, their engineers, and instead of using a couple meters that they do to really fine tune it, there's another technique that they're going to try and utilize, so...
So a Generac technician is actually coming out.
Yeah, and will be, you'll know, you know, Wednesday morning whether or not it works or not. And if it doesn't, then there was another, you know, there was a conference that was with Metro Power and the mayor and Bob and myself, and they came up with looking for different alternatives to get that generator replaced.
Right. Yeah, because Metro Power field tested the unit, right? And they said it was worthy of our use, and we're trying to hold them responsible for this.
And the concern that the mayor I have is they could fine tune this generator, or if it gets out of tune again and damages equipment, you know? I'm concerned about that. They say it can't happen. I asked John that when he called.
Right.
And I said, well, you know, is it like a tire if it gets out of tune again? Is it going to do damage? He saw, now, once we get it tuned, it'll stay that way. I don't know.
Well, you know, it's a great generator for, you know, the well pumps or, you know, whatever, but...
I'm an optimist. We'll find out Wednesday morning.
Okay. That ends my report.
Planning building consultant trustee here.
Building Department monthly report was enclosed for your review. That ends my report.
Public safety committee trustee Coleman.
Yeah, Police Department and, excuse me, Gold Enforcement Multi-Reporter enclosed for your review. Any questions?
Good note that completes my report.
Public Works Committee trustee Capors.
Water Department monthly report, along with Sewer Department monthly reports are both enclosed for your review. Penfield, Elm, Birch Street Water Main update. Bid opening has been set for Tuesday, January 17th, right here at the village hall. The village board can then consider the bids at our January 23 meeting. There'll be 120-day hold on the bids as we await for the IEP, I E P A to approve the bid in the moment, and these reviews have taken 120 days or more. Again, we're at the mercy of the I E P A on this, and then, is it going to be Ray?
Yeah.
That'll be here. So Ray, our village engineer for this project, will be here January 23rd, and he'll kind of explain a little bit more, but it's a...
Park Forest has a similar loan for water main install. They had to hold that bid for 300 days until the UDA approved the bid and the contractor held this bid. But the state government right now is just, it's terrible. It's very disheartening, let's put it that way. Well, you know, who knows who Park Forest was using for their engineering and that? And that's part of the reasons why we use who we use.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of the things that you take into consideration when you do projects like this, is who you're using with an engineering firm and the type of relationships they have with those people in those positions at the I E P A. So hopefully, we're not looking at a situation like that.
Well, all our ducks in the world is just a matter of getting them to sign on.
Exactly. Excellent.
Okay. Consider a motion authorizing the village president to sign a contract with H R Green Engineers for the submission of biannual bridge inspection report for $1,500. That's the inspection for Cardinal Creek Boulevard, something that happens every two years, so I will go ahead and I will make a motion authorizing the village president to sign a contract with H R Green Engineers for the biannual bridge inspection report for $1,500.
Motion on the floor. There was a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Safer Out to School Grant Project Update. IDAT has now approved the beacons again, so they have been ordered. We hope they have them installed very soon on those. Illinois General Assembly considers new testing laws pertaining to lead in water. Nothing's been approved, but in the few, moving forward in the future, the village may need to track the number of water service lines that are let. Those are by the homeowner. Those are not the village's service lines, but we still need to report on those. Schools will also be affected by this. We'll see what comes of it. Just an update. Leaf disposal contract with Smith Farms. It expires at the end of the season. Buddy, Bob, you guys will start working on a new contract for another five years, keep our leaf collection going, same as this. Consider a resolution regarding maintenance obligation on states of right of ways. This is a resolution that we adopt every two years. It allows us to make repairs to water and sewer lines in the state's right-of-way without a permit. So you got a resolution number?
2016 dash 09.
2016 dash, what was it?
09.
09. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2016 dash 09 regarding maintenance obligation on state of right-of-way.
So motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions or motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Wayland?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Yes.
with retirements, so on and so forth. We are still working.
The good news is it appears that we can run electric along the parkway from existing streetlights that are on the corners. If that's the case, we don't have to deal with easements. But we still have to get ComEd out there and get a log-on layout and a price.
We had suggested to let this person retire, bring a new person in because again, if the retiree comes out, everything may get lost and may start to rain. So we said we might as well wait until the new person becomes available.
It was so flipping cold and snowy out, they're not even putting poles in anywhere.
They're retiring at the...
Retiring.
January 1.
January 1.
Yeah, January 1, so it'll be our first year.
Okay. All right, that concludes my report.
Just a comment on leaf protection, or leaf...
Collection.
Yeah, that. There was every intent to make one more collection this year and that was the weekend that it snowed and it was supposed to, temperature was supposed to rise during the night, everything was supposed to melt, and they had planned on making one more leaf pickup during that week. As we all know, it never rose, it froze, and they couldn't make the leaf pickup that week. So, and now we have what we have, so.
Yeah, you see, where were the plows until the winter flower?
The plows are not bad.
They're bad, buddy.
Brown snow.
I don't know if they'd still do it, I know that very weak. I had put my leaves in my house pickup and the garbage collector didn't pick them up.
Yeah, if you camouflage them, they'll, they won't, they won't look in there. But also, if you put them in the bags, we still have our dumpster down at the end of the, at the shop.
I honestly believe, Bud, that from December 1 to April 1, there's an exemption in the law that they can put this stuff on. I think, because they pick up Christmas trees.
I think they'll pick them up. Yeah, I mean, in fact, I put a sign on there, don't look at the can, and they still picked it up. But I think they will now.
But either, even if they don't, I would probably say worst-case scenario, they can still, if they have bags, they can still throw them in there and we can still get rid of them if it becomes a nuisance down at the shop with our dumpster that we carry all year round.
Economic Development, trustee Beal.
Okay, the village attends Will County Center for Economic Development annual meeting. At this meeting, we heard from the President of Illinois Chamber of Commerce and the North American Logistics Engineer from Amazon that talked about his company's commitment to Will County. Dean Fullerton, he's the director, and some of the stuff that he talked about, very impressive. Amazon on Cyber Monday last year, of course, they didn't have this year's data yet, but Cyber Monday last year, it was 40, I mean, 54 million items sold. That's 629 per second. That's how much they sold on Amazon. In the United States, they have 70 fulfillment centers, 149 worldwide. 90,000 full-time employees and then during the holidays, they kick it up to like 120,000. Said they're always hiring and in Will County alone, we have 5,000 employees of Amazon, soon adding another 1,000. And there are six fulfillment centers in Illinois, two in Joliet, two in Edwardsville, one in Romiaville and one in Moni soon to open.
It's almost ready, yeah.
Yeah. And Will County is doing real well. I guess in the last 10 years, they went from 15, which was sounding what I thought, 15 million square foot of manufacturing to 150 million square foot, foot. 10 times what they had in 15 years. So it is growing and a lot of that is from Amazon, for sure. But there's other companies too. One of the things that Amazon, what he was talking about, is their employee benefits. Sounds like it's phenomenal. 401Ks and stock options with the company. Also tuition for school and these career choices where they pay for your tuition and schooling, I think after one year with the company. And then you can go on to another company, but they're just trying to educate their workers and keep a, you know, a portion of them. He says 8,000 people's already been through that program with them, so. Any questions on that? Bob, anything else you've...
None.
No, that was pretty good, huh? All right, Gould Street Boardwalk update. The committee will be meeting with Mike Stanula on December 29th to go over prints for the boardwalk. What time was that? Was that 2?
2, 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
Okay, indoor billboard project. The village and the chamber are involved in a project where a vendor sells video ads to local businesses and they are displayed in the lobby of the feature businesses such as Metro Eye Care, Dr. DeForest, and the dentist offices in town. The village hall, the library, and the princess would be other locations for such billboards. The video screen is a 40-inch high-def TV and the ads change every 20 seconds. There is no volume. This is another way we can promote the local businesses and provide them avenue to get their message out. This project would be only for feature businesses.
I put a couple of stipulations when I met with the person that they had to be endorsed by the chamber. So I didn't end up with 6 TVs in the lobby. We're doing this because the chamber is asking us to do it. And we also have the opportunity to put messages on there concerning community events as part of the rotation because they don't want ads constantly on there. They want to keep people's interest and show community interest up on there. So it's up and running in Crete. I think, John, you said you've seen it in Crete?
Yeah, it's actually where, yeah.
Where they have it in Crete?
That place I get my haircut, Village Chair Studio. She's been cutting my hair.
Crete City Hall's getting years old for their...
It's nice, there's, it's got music, you know, like it's nothing crazy or anything like that. It's just a nice low tone music that plays and it's just a screen that just sits there and it's all, that one's all Crete, so.
So when you're in Dr. DeForest office and know the day's sick, you don't have to watch soap operas, you can watch...
Yeah.
You can watch ads for...
We saw something similar to that at the IML conference.
Yes, you did.
We liked it, we liked it a lot, so, that's good. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Thanks for your...
Lurway Dispatch. Bob's had this under agenda for quite some time and I've taken it off the agenda because there's been so much arguing going on that we didn't know which way it was going to go. It's now gotten to a point where we think we're getting down to the nitty-gritty where the bylaws would be approved and/or we would ask the I G A that's included in our packet to be presented to the village board. Therefore, we've basically given that to you to digest. And then there actually is a couple more meetings scheduled, so it could change. But just to give you an update, it's read material for your knowledge. The meetings have been terrible. They've been contentious. Okay, but very demeaning, very just, I think it's very uncalled for, but bottom line is, is the end result, if you read this in the packet, no matter how they got there, I think it's fairly acceptable at this particular point in time provided nothing dramatically changes, which it could. So bottom line is, is the intent was to save us money. It is currently going to save us money. Any additional towns that could come on board, which there is one, is possibly going to save us some more money. So if it wasn't going to save us money, which at one time that appeared it was, was going to be the case, that was an F D O B exemption we could ask for from the state of Illinois. We can stay as we are. Since that time, they've worked out the figures and it will save us money so we no longer have an argument and we are going to be forced to do this. We can decide to go elsewhere. Right now, I don't think we should, I think we should stay with this particular center. But if something goes wrong or something changes or something like that, we do have the option of going anywhere, we're independent agencies. I do think the police and us, police and fire should go to the same spot, but other than that, we have no commitment to have to go where East Con goes per se. We're all separate entities. But like now, right now, I think we've worked on a lot of issues and hopefully in the upcoming meetings, they'll be calm. I tried to host a meeting to, tried to get the comm to prevail and not a lot of the mayors stepped up to the plate and said, yeah, they attend. So the cities are primarily the problem, in my opinion. That's basically the gist of it.
Versus the cities being primarily, versus the villages? I mean, cities versus the villages?
Oh, the fire districts. Just villages. The villages, the fire districts seem to be fairly, fairly happy with what's occurring.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriff, and Will County. The villages and municipalities are the ones that seem to be arguing over different issues, which Bob and I really, we talked about this in the beginning, it was supposed to go one way. It didn't go one that way. It caused for bringing in another town in that was supposed to be done after the fact. And talking to some of the mayors and talking with Bob, it doesn't really matter to us who their customer is as long as it doesn't affect our bottom line, doesn't affect our citizens and doesn't affect, doesn't affect our public safety personnel. They can have Egypt in there for all this daycare as long as it doesn't affect anything that we do in our costs.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where are they looking at locating this?
It's already being built on Lurway Road.
Lurway Road?
Yeah.
Lurway and 45.
The, at the time this first started, that if this, if this still doesn't come to fruition, which it could, if a lot of these towns decide to go their separate ways and the numbers don't come out right, the sheriff just simply said he'd use the space. The sheriff is our land work and then we are a separate entity that we're trying to form and there's been a lot of argument over the separate entity. It's no longer sure.
The model that we have recently adopted is a finance committee. Works much better than the first model where they decided they were to co-locate as opposed to consolidate, which means everyone's job is safe and we're going to pay the highest salary on the rack. So in other words, all the dispatches would be paid Romeoville dispatcher rates because Romeoville is part of this deal. Well, that budget deal went up to $6.2 million or whatever and then everyone had to pay more. Well, we're going to file for variance because this is not cost-effective for us and the state law says we can file. Well, then they finally realized what the east side was going to do and now they have a new model of consolidation, reducing the number of employees. And the budget got down to 5.3 million. So that number works for us. It will save about, right now, about 12 grand a year.
And if this other municipality comes in, which I think they will come in, it should lower our budget even more.
But again, that's a fluid number, it could change. We'll show you the model when we do the, when we consider the I G A, but I can't show you a final number because it could change.
The next mayor's, South suburban mayor's or manager's meeting is going to be close by. It's going to be in Escremenee, Stager. It's on January 19th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting starts with a dinner afterwards. If anybody wants to go to that, please let us know, we'll make the reservations for you. Go as a group.
The mayor and I are definitely going. It's also the same date as the finance and Tiff.
Lotmer.
Yeah.
Lotmer.
What's the date, 19?
January 19th. It's close by, so I'd approve you to go ahead, just a little of the boards. And then, just a reminder, there is no meeting on Monday, December 26th, so the next meeting will be January 9th. Is there any other old business to come before the board? Any other new business?
Just one.
And I have something to put in.
Okay. We received notice in the mail today that Bernard Welding has applied for and the U P A has approved, subject to public notice requirements, a new five-year operating term on this retribution right down there. So that may explain some of the reason why they kind of back off again from redesigning the plant. Apparently, they came up with some kind of processor design that's going to buy them another five years' dollar. So that might be off the table for a few years. Thanks, Ryan.
Under new business, tomorrow night, the township has its senior Christmas party, which we are invited to. If anybody'd like to go to that, let us know tonight. And then we'll try and make sure we have a table for whoever wants to go tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. at the Yann Vets. And then probably last but not least, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, safe holiday season, and after a German, we'll see you all next year, if not sooner. We do not have a need to go into executive session, therefore, is there a motion loser?
Some vote.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Second, any questions in motion? Anyone want to say longer? Go home.
Eric?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Gillan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you.